All right, good evening, everyone. And welcome to the City of Casa Grande City Council Meeting on July 6th. And do we have our two council members, Mr. Lavender, Ms. Fitzgibbons, on the line?
Yep, sir.
Yes, there.
All right, great. Thank you. So I'll call the meeting to order. The first order of business is our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. I believe we have, and I think I see him in the audience, Pastor Richard Cunningham from the Lighthouse Ministries. Pastor, welcome. If you wouldn't mind leading us in our invocation, and then please remain standing, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Awesome, thank you. Father, we come to you with praise and worship. We give all the honor and glory to you every time we approach you. Father, thank you for sending your son to die for us and raise again with a promise of eternity with you. Father, I pray that, first of all, all wisdom and knowledge and guidance comes from you. I pray that you would be with the council tonight, be with the mayor and all the council members. Father, just guide them and direct them, give them the heart and desire and passion that you put on their heart, Father, for leading our city. Thank you for all you've done, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
Yes, sir.
All right, next order of business is our roll call. Gloria, let the roll call show that there are five council members present in the chambers and two on the phone, Ms. Fitzgibbons and Mr. Lavender.
So noted.
Mayor McFarland, as far as minutes go, we only have one item, and I move approval of consider, to consider approving the city council regular meeting minutes of June 19, 2021, as they're presented.
Second.
June 21, right? June 21 of 21, okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, claims against the city, item D1.
Move to accept and pay the claims.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the claim.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. This is to approve the claims of June 29, June 16 through June 29 of 2021. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Meeting agenda approval. Staff have any changes, Larry? Are we changing anything?
We got none this far.
Okay, just anybody on council? Anybody on the phone on the council? Since I can't see your faces. I guess not. Okay. Seeing no changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Does that move?
Can I get a second?
Second. You guys all asleep?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We have no special presentations, so next item on the agenda is our consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone who has anything you want to pull off of the consent agenda? Anyone on the phone?
No, sir.
Anyone in the public? All right, seeing none, then I will call for a roll call vote, the consent agenda items. Oh, I need a motion, I guess, don't I?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote now, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yep.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we'll move to item I, I1, consider approval of resolution number.
Do you have item H, public comments on the agenda?
Oh, thanks. Only done it twice in the last year, so apologize. Yes, we do have a public comments, so this is a time, this is item H on the agenda, is the time when anyone in the public, if they would like to approach the council. Just as a reminder, if you do and you would like to say something, it's not agendized, so we cannot respond, but we can direct staff to follow up. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the council? This is your opportunity. Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public comments, and we'll move to item I, I1, and consider approval of resolution number 5315. Terry, is that you?
That's me.
All right.
Good evening, mayor and council. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council approve an agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad Company to authorize a public highway at grade crossing agreement between the City of Casa Grande and the Union Pacific Railroad Company. As you're all aware, we are developing a traffic signal at Sunland Gin and Jimmy Kerr that involves the railroad, including an extensive amount of work on the railroad for preemption. So this agreement is necessary for that cooperation, and it identifies items that the railroad is going to procure and install. It also identifies repayment to the railroad of $482,000, I'm sorry, $482,630,000, or $30 upon completion of their work. The total work of the project is estimated to be $990,000. The city's portion of that will be $507,000. Would that entertain any questions?
Any questions from?
I just have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
I think that's really a key place to put that, put that stoplight. It's Sunland Gin Road, is that where it's going?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. No, that's always been a dangerous place, so that's good that they're going to do that.
Sunland Gin and Jimmy Kerr, right?
Jimmy Kerr, yeah.
Yeah, Sunland Gin Road and Jimmy Kerr Boulevard.
Yeah.
It's been a long time coming. This project has been in the works for quite a few years. The majority of that time is honestly coordinating and working with the railroad so that it interacts with the signal. We can't just throw up a signal, so.
What's the timeline?
Go ahead, Matt.
Good question. Mr. Mayor, Member Herman, we are in the process of finalizing a solicitation for a construction manager at risk. We anticipate that going out probably early August. Once that solicitation results in a selection, and then we develop a guaranteed maximum price for the work, that will then come back to council and then hopefully move forward with construction. There's a lot of lead time in the equipment, particularly on the railroad side, so we would imagine that probably, hate to say it, but we might be looking at June of next year to commence construction because of the lead time on the equipment.
Any other questions, comments? Any comments or questions on the phone?
No.
No, sir.
Okay. All right, seeing no more comments or questions, then I'll call for a resolution, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5315, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the terms and conditions of an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for the public highway at-grade crossing project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of an agreement.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5315 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yep.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we'll move to item I2, consider approval of resolution number 5316, proposal from Capital R Construction.
This recommendation is for the mayor and council to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Capital R Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $49,999 for the design and construction of airport café improvements at the City of Casa Grande Municipal Airport. As I'm sure mayor and council is aware, there is a small café space. Previous tenants, it's very limited amenities. This project seeks to install a friar hood, if you will, a grease hood, that's required for food and safety requirements as well as fire requirements, to be able to expand that to include a cooktop and a friar. This project is just installing the hood, the electrical, various ventilation. The cooktop and the friar have already been purchased and will be installed separately. So this amenity, if we will, will improve the list or range of items that can be improved by a future tenant, as that space is currently vacant. The design is minimal, so it's included in the proposal for services and in the contract. In order to procure the services, we did an RFQ. We were in receipt of three contractors' qualifications for review. The contractor that was highest rank withdrew his participation, so we went to the next one on the list, which is Capital R Construction, and negotiated an appropriate scope and fee with them to be able to install the hood and the pertinent work. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Mr. Powell.
I know one of the things, there's been complaints about from pilots and whatever, is there not an outdoors facility for bathrooms for people that fly in and get off there? Is there any chance that that could be incorporated in what's being done here to?
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Powell, there is a restroom available.
Inside, but not outside?
I think there is one outside.
Is there outside? Okay.
We, and I may be incorrect in that statement, but those are amenities and facilities that we can, of course, look at improving at some point in the road. You know, I think we want to focus on the café space and the previous vendor that had been in there. It definitely is a valuable asset for users of the airport, to attract users to the airport. This is just going to enhance it by be able to enhance the menu and the offerings that they're able to provide, so. I hope that answers your questions.
Donna, did you have a question?
No, Terry, I just have more of a comment than anything, and I think that it's needed. It's been needed out there for a long time. My only question is, because of the, we don't have a tenant, is that going to raise the price of rent out there for them to incur, or how are we looking at that? Because, you know, we want to make sure if we're going to spend this kind of money, that we have somebody out there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Member McBride, I believe that ultimately we will look at the valuation of that space once these amenities are in place. It should increase the.
Rentability.
Value, if you will, of it, but also just the saleability of the product and the attraction that it can bring to the airport. I think that is also going to be taken into consideration with any negotiation of a lease for that space. I can't say that we've said, yes, we will raise rates, or no, we will not. I think it ultimately will be evaluated, and hopefully this is an amenity that will be able to provide a variety that will become an attraction, as was discussed earlier. Maybe it will end up in one of those flyers.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any other questions? Lisa, Jeff, anything?
No, mayor.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, then I will call for resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5316, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Capital R Construction, Inc., for the design and construction of airport café space improvements at the City of Casa Grande Municipal Airport, authorizing the expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5316 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yep.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Good job.
All right, we'll move to item I3, consider approval of ordinance number 3283, which I think is what we just discussed in our study session.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Staff recommends the mayor and city council authorize a job order contract with Okanagan Trail Construction in an amount not to exceed $350,584 for construction of Phase 1 of the Casa Grande Community Trail. In addition, staff recommends authorizing an additional $48,000 to provide contingency in this project for bonding costs and potential unforeseen issues during the construction phase. The total requested authority for this project is $398,000, or $398,584. As you know, Okanagan was chosen in a qualifications-based process. They are an award-winning company that specializes in trail planning, design, and construction, and they have 38 years of experience throughout the world, so we're really excited to have them as a potential partner. I don't really have any other details from the project, other than what was presented at the study session, so with that, I'd stand for questions.
Steve, this is just a piece from Rotary Park to Pier.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And it's a separate project, the part that's cleaning up Rotary Park?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that might be the Okanagan, the trail construction, I mean, the pronunciation of it. There's an Indian tribe up around in the state of Washington.
I could possibly be stand corrected, yes.
That have the Okanagan Indians up there.
Okanagan.
Is that a question?
I just, as I say, I know that's how they spell it and what they are. I just was.
The owner of the company is from that area.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
That's why the name of the company is that.
Okanagan.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody on the phone have any questions?
No, ma'am.
No.
All right, seeing no more questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3283, an ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Okanagan Trail Construction, Inc., for the construction of part of the Casa Grande Community Trail Project, authorizing the expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3283 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, all right, a motion and two seconds. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yep.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is I4. This is considering approval of an ordinance number 3284, and this is a lease between the City of Casa Grande and the Boys and Girls Club of the Sun Corridor.
The staff recommendation is that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance to enter into a lease agreement for the Lynn Colas Center and approve the public service agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of the Sun Corridor for youth services in the areas of after-school programs and summer programs at the Lynn Colas Center. If you recall, at the budget retreat, staff introduced the idea of a new partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of the Sun Corridor. In this potential partnership, the Boys and Girls Club would provide services at the Lynn Colas Center. In a concurrent move, the youth soccer program that they previously ran would transfer to the City Recreation Division. Some of the details of the proposal include an initial term of three years, which would align it with the recreation center lease that we currently have, a base rent of $1 per year, three five-year extensions are available, very similar to the recreation center lease. The hours of operation for the Lynn Colas Center would become 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the summer, the same hours that the Boys and Girls Club uses at their existing clubs, and that provides an additional, at least 400 additional programming hours. The after-school program would be the same hours that they run at their other clubs. The city would fund the program $60,000 per year for five years. In addition, the city would fund another $31,200 per year for three years to provide no-cost programming to the members of the community who previously attended the Lynn Colas Center. After three years, that membership would revert into the base model that the Boys and Girls Club currently uses, which does provide options for full or partial scholarships. The city would maintain the asset of Lynn Colas by providing custodial, maintenance, and landscaping for the facility. At full capacity, 150 children would be served daily by this proposal. The city would still have access to the Lynn Colas base on a space-available basis when the Boys and Girls Club is not in operation. There's also several key points regarding the soccer program. Registration for the soccer program is scheduled to take place at the recreation center and through our normal online procedures. Stalker would still be held in the fall with several weeks of practice and an eight-week season. Staff is planning to implement a sponsorship program that would be announced in the coming days that would provide scholarships to area youth if they need it. The Boys and Girls Club will provide soccer consulting throughout this first year to get us on our feet. We would be using a similar model to our youth basketball program that we have, which is very successful, so we're excited to take on soccer. The fiscal impact, I'll just read from the RCA. The city anticipates an overall savings in the operational costs that are currently expended providing similar programming at the center. The proposal requires the city to fund the program as follows. $60,000 per year for five years for operational costs, $31,000 a year for three years to cover programming fees for previous community members, and then operational costs for cleaning of the facility and maintenance of the groups. This is approximately 50% savings for the city financially. At this time, I'd like to introduce Matt Lindberg, the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club of the Sun Corridor, to make a few comments.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston, and the rest of council. It's my honor to be here with you tonight. It feels like it's been a while, so it's good to see you all again. Our goal has always been to provide a safe place for young people to go when they're not in school. And while we've had at least one club open throughout the entire pandemic, we've been forced to operate for most of this time with limited capacity, and as a result, a waiting list. Over the past year, we have realized that we need to put all of our resources towards accomplishing the goal of providing a safe place for kids. Taking over operations of the Lynn Colas Recreation Center will allow us to serve more Casa Grande youth, and not operating the Youth Soccer League will allow us to put all of our focus on our after-school and summer programs. At the same time, we want to make sure that the Youth Soccer League continues to be offered. It was the, it was the job that brought me to this organization 18 years ago, and it's certainly a baby of mine, so I certainly have some vested interest in that. And in talking to Parks and Recreation staff, we know that they will be able to put more time and resources into this league than we have been able to recently, so. We look forward to continuing the legacy that the city has created with the Lynn Colas Recreation Center. We met with Michelle Colas, Lynn Colas's daughter, earlier this summer, and shared our plans with her. She was excited to hear about our plans for expanded services and that the facility will continue to have her father's name. And in our discussions with the Community Services Department, both organizations talked about the importance of making sure that our new services are always available to current Lynn Colas families. With that in mind, all Palo Verde and Valago Middle School students, plus any other current Lynn Colas members, will always be given first priority when registering for the programs at that facility. And as Steve mentioned earlier, these same students will be able to attend our programs in this facility for free for at least the next three years. We're beginning to look at some models to continue that once that part of the partnership is over. When school starts later this month, our plan is to close the building and begin a small renovation project. This project will take the two open spaces in the small office on the west side of the building and turn them into three classrooms, an art room, a games room, and a computer lab. We anticipate this project will take three to five months, but once it is completed, we will be able to serve up to 150 students every day in this facility in a safe and effective manner. During this time, we will open a temporary club at Palo Verde Elementary School, so that there will never be a disruption of services for these students. I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to publicly recognize and thank our board of directors and our staff as well. These two groups have worked incredibly hard over the past 16 months. Their efforts not only kept our doors open since the pandemic started, but also allowed us to be able to meet both temporary and long-term needs as well. It seems crazy to me that we are going to expand and open our seventh club in the middle of a pandemic, but the need for safe places for kids to go when they aren't in school has only increased, and we are in a position to talk about this program swap, excuse me, because of our board of directors and our staff. We've got a couple of them with us tonight, and thank you guys for coming as well. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you again for considering our proposal. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Powell.
I have a statement rather than a question. I think it is, that has been there for a long time. The community around it's really proud of it, and the fact that a year, for three years, provide scholarships to the Boys and Girls Club members who have historically utilized it in the schools in the area, I think is really key. I think that's so important to have it accepted in that community and for them not to lose the ability to use the facility.
Yeah.
Sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Bob.
This is probably more for Steve, and I too appreciate the effort made to not leave any children out that were part of Len Cola or going into Boys and Girls Club. But I do wonder, is there any adult programs that this transition will leave behind? Has there been Adult Basketball League or anything like that using that gymnasium?
Sure. One of the key factors in the proposal is that we'll still have access to the building. And so our normal summer program or after-school program did not include adult programming until after the kids left, and so we'll have the exact same features of use of the building.
As we had last year?
Yes. For instance, in the winter, we have line dancing during the week, during the day, so that would happen during school hours when the kids aren't there.
Okay.
Youth basketball and adult basketball, drop-in pickleball, things like that would happen after 6:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Donna?
I just have just a couple of points. First of all, thank you to Steve and Matt for meeting with me about this project a few weeks back. I think for me, the priority was to make sure our current members were included, and you have proven that to be happening. The extended hours is really important to me because I think that that's something that our community is lacking. And then obviously, a 50% savings to, you know, to the city. It's a win-win situation for us, and the Boys and Girls Club has a stellar reputation in this community, and I can't think of anyone that, you know, deserves to have this partnership more than Matt and his staff, so thank you.
And one note to add on to that, you know, I truly look at this as a partnership. If the Boys and Girls Club didn't exist, we would be providing after-school and summer programming, and so this partnership allows a technical expert to provide those programs for us while we can provide youth sports and recreational programs on the other end. So we look at it as definitely a win-win partnership.
Matt?
Yeah, the Boys and Girls Club and City Casa Grande have had a very beneficial partnership for over 20, 25 years. Matt, when you were in junior high or?
That's it. That's it. We were in high school together. It wasn't that long ago.
But, you know, I just want to say that I'm excited about this because to Steve's point, the Boys and Girls Club National Program has all the programming, the education piece, the art piece, the sports piece, that is proven system, helps the kids with their homework, and knows what kids are doing these days, and have a great grasp of how to serve our community. So I'm excited to see that they're doing that and also carrying on with the Len Cola's legacy, you know, and so I appreciate that, Matt, that you guys reached out to them, you know, and made sure they were good with it, and it sounds like they're very excited. One question I did have is how many youth participants do we have at the Len Cola Center currently?
Currently, well, one thing that I failed to mention is that the Boys and Girls Club have been temporarily running some programs during the COVID pandemic because we closed our programs, and so they've been operating and prior to, let's say, pre-pandemic, we were probably using 40 to 60 kids in our program, and they'll increase that number to 150.
Yeah, so more than double what we're serving now, so that, just the more kids that you can touch, we can touch. And it goes back to what I said is, the city's good at building buildings and running some programs, and the Boys and Girls Club is really great at running after-school programs and education programs. So again, this is a win-win, and Matt, just remember who was the president of the board when you were hired as a director.
I was gonna say that we have a long line of great board presidents, so it goes both ways.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff or Lisa, do you guys have any comments or questions?
Mayor, I actually just have a comment. Of course, I'm happy to see this partnership, and it's so nice to see us maximizing the use of that facility. Of course, I'm gonna, you know, bring up the issues on adult programming because I do think it's vital for that area. When we were considering the recreation center and everything that was going into that, we did talk about Len Cola and what they offered the community. We were trying to spread out, you know, the services and programs, so I'm happy to see that we are going to continue the evening, and I think it's critical to continue with the evening activities there to provide those services and spread it out throughout the community. But I'm really excited about the partnership and us serving the youth in that area, and I know that his staff will do a fantastic job growing that, you know, the services there. So thank you, Matt, again, and I'm happy to see the partnership.
Thank you, Lisa. Jeff, do you have any comments or questions?
No, just a thank you to Matt and Steve for working out this partnership. I'm excited for it.
Great, thank you. And I would echo everybody else's sentiments up here and on the phone. In full disclosure, I have huge support of the Boys and Girls Club, so this partnership, I think, will be critical, will be critical for the Len Cola area. I think we'll be able to add and to serve more youth and continue to serve adult programming as well. So I think it's just a great, you know, marriage of expertise between the city and the Boys and Girls Club. So Matt and Steve, thank you guys for putting this together, and thanks to the board also, the Boys and Girls Club Board for their support of this as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other comments or questions, then I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number three two eight four, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a lease agreement between the city of Casa Grande and the Boys and Girls Club of the Sun Corridor, accepting a proposal from the Boys and Girls Club of the Sun Corridor to provide youth programming and authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of an agreement by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number three two eight four as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion in a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, so we'll move to boards and commissions. Tonight, we're going to consider the appointment of Eddie Mankell to the Board of Appeals with the terms to expire August 4th, 2025, and also approving the appointment of Rusty Riggs to the Board of Appeals with the terms to expire on August 4th, 2024. So I want to thank both these gentlemen for volunteering. They're both in the construction trade, so they'll be a great addition to the appeals board, and Don and I did interview both of them, and they're both very excited to be a part of it, so we want to bring that, present this to the council tonight for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve the.
Move approval. Second. Of the selection.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, so J one is approved. Thank you again to Eddie Mankell and to Rusty Riggs. Item J two is considered approving the appointment of Andrea Varela to the Parks and City Recreation Advisory Board with a term to expire on February 1, 2023, and approve a waiver for her as she's on another committee membership, so this will be a waiver of the committee membership rule. And a big thank you to Andrea, and really thank you to everybody who volunteers for our boards and commissions. I think Andrea was excited to be a part of the Parks and Rec Board, so Don and I are recommending her for approval.
So moved with the waiver?
Okay.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, J two is approved. Again, thank you, Andrea. Under J three, this is considered the reappointment of Dennis Jenkins to the IDA Board, the Industrial Development Authority, with a term to expire on August 4th, 2027, and this recommendation comes from their chairman, Mr. Red Fitzgibbons, so I am passing this along to the council for approval. Any comments or questions on it? Mr. Powell?
I just think Dennis is an obvious candidate. He's being reappointed. He has experience there, so I think he would be an asset.
That's right, it's a reappointment. Entertaining a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, J three is approved. Thank you, Dennis, for your service. And that is, we have one more item, L one. I almost blew by it. Brett?
Small.
This is under, yeah, just a small item, just a budget. Public meeting and public hearing, this is item L one regarding the proposed fiscal year 21, '22 final budget and property tax levy.
Mayor and council, this evening, we will be reviewing the city's final 2022 final budget schedules, and we will highlight the, some of the areas of interest in the budget and seek council's approval for a resolution adopting the final budget. Building Casa Grande's budget was done in alignment with the organization's mission, vision, and strategic plan. The process began in late January, and we are now at the point where we will be asking council to adopt the final budget in a special meeting later this evening. Here's some, it's not cooperating. I apologize. Okay. A few highlights for us to look at, for you to look at this evening. The budget, we're recommending a final budget, and that includes transfer of $300.7 million, but the total budget excluding transfer, which you will be asked to approve this evening, is a budget of $281.5 million. Our expenditure limitation set by the State Department of Revenue is $248.9 million, and later in the presentation, I will show you where this amount is way above what our budget that is subject to the expenditure limitation is. We are anticipating no increase in primary property taxes. We have a, we are projecting a property tax, primary property tax levy of $4.3 million, and that is below the maximum for requiring a truth in taxation hearing. We're anticipating a slight increase, if I should use the word slight, in secondary property taxes. I have also provided you with an outline of the proper secondary property tax rates from 2000, fiscal 2018 to fiscal '22. You will note that in fiscal '18, fiscal years '18 and '19, the secondary property tax rates were at 60 cents. We're projecting a secondary property tax rate for fiscal '22 at 57, oh, 570 cents. We will maintain, this budget would maintain levels of service as they currently were in, as they were in fiscal '21, and where necessary, the budget expands services that were restricted due to the COVID pandemic. This budget provides also for bond proceeds to pay off the PSPRS unfunded liabilities. We projected $68 million. In the next meeting or so, the council would be asked to approve the authority to float bonds for this expenditure. We're providing also $14 million of bond proceeds for capital projects, $3 million of bond proceeds to fund bond issuance costs. The budget also contains merit increases adjusted for compensation, for the compensation and class study. We project, we're providing for 12 new positions. In our tentative budget, we mentioned eight positions. We highlighted eight positions. We have since added four new positions to that list. We have, we, in the tentative budget, we had, we highlighted eight vacant positions that remained authorized but unfunded. For the final budget, we have seven vacant positions. We moved the paralegal position that was unfunded, has been moved to a funded position since the mayor and council approved the body cam project that was presented by the police department. The budget also includes proposed funding for capital projects totaling $70.2 million, and included in that amount is $6 million of contingency. In the following slides, I would walk us through, I will walk council, mayor and council through the breakdown of the numbers that are presented in Schedule A before you. I, as I indicated earlier, despite the fact that our budget, our total budget that we're presenting to council this evening is $281.5 million, and our expenditure limitation amount is $248.9 million, we are not going above, we're not projecting to go above the expenditure limitation. We have exclusions, and I've provided to council a breakdown of the exclusions. $85 million of bond proceeds, $31.7 million of federal grants, $11.2 million of earth expenditure, and $2.7 million of airport capital grants. So with all of these exclusions, our budget that is, that will be subject to expenditure limitation would be $150.9 million. This slide identifies available resources for, resources for each of the major fund types. Available resources include fund balance and estimated revenues for fiscal '22. As you will see, the general fund makes up 41% of the available resources in the fiscal year 2022 budget, with special revenue funds making up 15%, 15% of the resources of that budget. Also from Schedule A, this slide would help reassure mayor and council that our estimated resources, reflected in gray, are sufficient to meet our projected expenditures reflected in gold for fiscal year 2021. So we have made sure in all of our deliberations on the budget and all of our discussions that we have available resources to meet the total budget that is being presented to council today. All right, a brief look at our property tax rates. For fiscal '22, we're projecting primary property, primary property tax rate of $1.0148, and for the secondary property tax, $5.702. For total primary property tax levy of $4,207,400, and for secondary property tax levy of Now that we have, now that we have talked about our revenues or sources of funds, we will turn our attention now to the uses or expenditures of funds. The general fund, as you will see, makes up approximately 47% of the total budget for fiscal '22. Our total budget is $281 million. The budget on the, the general fund is $133.6 million. This will be of interest to mayor and council, I think. We made sure to give mayor and council a quick look at what our general fund resources, what our general fund resources are, along with where we anticipate us ending the fiscal year, and the level of fund balance that we anticipate having by the end of fiscal year 2022. Our total revenue under the general fund, we're projecting $128.5 million. Of course, as I indicated earlier, total expenditures of $133.6 million. We're anticipating a projected fiscal year '21 cash, or fund balance of $71 million. Transfers out for a total of $17 million, and we're looking at the revenue stabilization of. looking at the revenue stabilization of $32.8 million. The interesting part here is that after we've set aside that $32.8 million, after we've transferred out of the general fund into the other funds where the necessary, the, we anticipate the city would end the fiscal year with a projected fund balance of $15.9 million, which makes up 24% of the projected expenditures of the city minus the expenditures for bond proceeds. So I think that's a health, a healthy outlook on the financial resources of the city. General fund impact. This slide is to give mayor and council an overview of the areas funded through the general fund, with personnel being the largest portion of the general fund expenditures. We're projecting personnel at $112 million. Of course, council understands that we have $68 million included in that $112 for PSPRS debt offset. The second largest part of the expenditures on the general fund is for contractual, contractual services, which make up $12 million of the overall budget of the general fund. General fund expenditures by service area, and that's from Schedule E of the official budget forms, that shows where we expect to spend our general fund resources by service area. We anticipate, of course, a $133 million general fund expenditure budget, with public safety having the largest share of the budget, if we exclude the 60, if we, of the budget, if we exclude the 68 million of bond proceeds from general government. Note also that the regular budget for general government excluding bond proceeds is $18 million, which includes contingency of $3.5 million. Of course, we understand that the $68 million of bond proceeds is technically a public safety expenditure, since the bonds would be issued to offset the debt, the PSPRS debt, which are related to debt which is related to police and fire personnel cost. Expenditures by service area for all funds, and this is from Schedule F of the official budget form. Schedule F provides an overview of expenditures for all funds by service area. In the aggregate, Public Works has the largest share of funding, since mayor and council will be approving in this budget several large projects that will be managed by Public Works, including the Thornton Road and sewer and wastewater projects. On this slide, we're providing mayor and council an overview of the capital improvement projects. We have capital, we're projecting capital improvement projects of $70 million, which of course, as I indicated earlier, includes $6 million of contingency. We have, I will run quickly through the largest projects. On this list to your right, we have, to the left of the screen, Thornton Road Widening, $9 million. Sewer Improvement Expansion, Expansion Projects, $5.7 million, replacing fire stations at $21 million. So we have several projects that are included in our budget. And as I indicated, that's for a total of $70 million. Here, we give, staff is giving council a look at the FTEs projected for fiscal year 2022. If you look at the 2021 column, we, we projected in fiscal '21, a total FTEs of 492.39 positions. However, the, the decrease between '21 and '22 is because part-time, non-benefited, and seasonal staff positions were included in the fiscal '21 numbers. But in collaboration with Human Resources Department, we, we decreased, we eliminated the part-time, non-benefited, and seasonal staff from the FTE count, and hence the reason for the reduction in part to 475.05 FTEs for fiscal '22. Okay, on personnel expenses, we're projecting 48 point, I'd say rounded $49 million in personnel costs. And that does not include overtime. It doesn't include part-time, non-benefited positions, and it doesn't include the SCMPO staff funding. Together with the overtime, part-time, non-benefited, and SCMPO staff funding, we would have, we are projecting total personnel cost of $49 million in the FY '22 budget. Key dates, late, right now, we, we, in the, in the process of going through the public hearing, and later this evening, we will ask, council will be approving the final budget for fiscal year 2022. The council will meet to adopt the primary, the, adopt the property tax levy on August 2nd, 2021, the first reading, with the final reading to be held on August 16th, 2021. Staff recommends that council adopts a resolution to set the fiscal year 2022 final budget per year tax schedule and the information presented to mayor and council this evening. I pause for any questions?
Yeah, we're gonna vote on this in the special hearing, correct?
Yes.
That'll, that'll follow right after this.
Certainly you can ask any questions.
Yeah, you want to ask questions now?
Well, I have something I can't vote, vote for, but I'll wait till it comes to a vote.
Okay. You don't, you don't have any questions?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody on the phone? Lisa? Jeff?
No.
No, sir.
Okay. So this was just more information. Oh, yeah, that's right. Pardon me. It does say public hearing. So as it being a public hearing, this is also an opportunity for the public to address the council on the proposed fiscal year 2021, '22 final budget and property tax levy. Larry, we're gonna, we have other opportunities to talk about the tax levy too, don't we?
Members of the council, as, as Angel has pointed out, the tax levy will be voted on, on, in, on, in the August 3rd meeting. I'm sorry, thank you, Brett. August 2nd, council meeting.
Okay. All right. No questions? All right, seeing none, then I will call for reports. So Lisa, you're on the phone. Remember, we're, we want to go hear, see some of the Suns game.
No report from me.
Oh, all right. Mr. Lavender?
None here, sir.
All right, Mr. Powell, if you want to make a comment?
Well, I just, I had brought it up before, but on the tax...
Yeah, this is on reports.
I know, but the tax thing is done, or we're...
No, no.
I'm gonna vote on the tax levy on August 2nd. You know, you can certainly discuss items related to the budget at the special session to follow.
Which follows this one?
Remember, reports, you will be taking action on the tax levy.
So I should wait till after the meeting's over with?
Wait till we go into the special meeting.
Okay.
Is that all right? He can talk about it in the special meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll talk about it then.
I'm good.
Okay. Bob, any, any reports?
No report, mayor.
Matt?
Go Suns.
Donna?
Just to, I just want to say thanks to Steve and Community Services for the Fourth of July celebration. I know they put a lot of work into it. I've heard some really good comments about the firework display. That's it. Thank you.
All right. And I just, I just want to remind everybody, you know, COVID is still here. I'm hearing that some younger people getting sick. So please be careful. Please get vaccinated. Mr. Powell, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just, I, I would like to recognize that our community has a lot of talented people that go to different places and do different things. Recently, we had the Ramos Brothers that are champion boxers, and they claim they're from Casa Grande, Arizona. When we went up to Prescott this last weekend, there's a group of little girls from probably maybe eight or nine up down to five or six, there's four of them. And they have a bluegrass festival up there. And, and they're called the Arizona Wildflowers. And they did a fantastic job. And as far as my, I, I like rodeos and ropings and that type of thing. And the Allen Boys have done exceptionally well this year. One of them placed fourth in the Bob Feist, which is a premier roping that takes place all year. His brother is in the college finals right now. And we've got one that's a world champion header that lives just outside of our city limits to the east of Casa Grande. So we've got a lot of things going and a lot of reasons to be proud of our community. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other comments, then I will adjourn tonight's regular city council meeting.